Ladies and gentlemen, I am going to call the February 16th, 2016, special meeting of the North Kingstown School Committee's order. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Evans-Ado.
Here.
Mr. Blasbog.
Here.
Mrs. Clarkin.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mrs. McGovern.
Here.
And Mrs. Helt, and student representative. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up for citizens' comment?
No. You have the sheet next to you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, first if I could get a motion to seal the executive session minutes of February 16th, 2016?
So moved.
Second, and Madam Clerk, I can disclose that no votes were taken in our executive session. And all those in favor of sealing the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have item 4A, which is the approval of suspension/termination of tenured NEA-NK employee B. And if someone would like to make a motion with regard to that item, or you know what, I'll make the motion. So, we haven't taken a vote, but I'm going to make a motion based on our discussion in executive session to suspend employee E.B. for the remainder of the current school year with a termination to follow.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion would have taken place in an executive session because it is a confidential employee matter, so all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item of our agenda is a approval of termination of tenured NEA-NK teacher employee A. Now, a little unusual for us, for folks in the audience, generally these matters are held in executive session to give the employee involved privacy with respect to a personnel matter. Each employee in that situation is given the option to have the matter held in an open session. The employee here has requested that her hearing be held in an open session. So, as a result, we're going to use names and we're going to do our normal process that we usually do in private here in public today. So, employee A is Mrs. Shelley McDonald's. And so if I could begin by recognizing the superintendent to please explain the reason for his recommendation.
Thank you. Good evening. I am recommending that Ms. Shelley McDonald be terminated at the conclusion of the 2015-16 school year. I'm making this recommendation because during the past two years, Ms. McDonald has been insubordinate to Principal Denise Mancieri. In March 2015, Ms. McDonald failed to attend a necessary park training after directed to do so, nor did she attend the park infrastructure trial earlier on the same day. She then failed to administer the park in March 2015 after being directed to do so. Additionally, in December 2015, she refused to administer the park after being directed to do so. As a result of this insubordination, Dr. Mancieri sent Ms. McDonald home for the day. In addition, at the end of the 2013-14 school year, then Principal Kenworthy sent a letter of reprimand to Ms. McDonald, having learned that she was turning off the wireless router in another teacher's classroom. As superintendent of schools, I cannot allow district staff to be insubordinate to their superiors, and therefore I am making the recommendation that Ms. McDonald be terminated at the conclusion of the school year.
Thank you. Now, the way this works is that the employee has the opportunity to make any statements that they want, as well as have representation from their union representatives who are present today. So I'd recognize Mr. Leitaker, if you'd like to make a statement at this time. Thank you.
If I may, the, with respect to the issue of insubordination, if I'm correct, the superintendent's identified the most recent occasion as December of 2015. As you, as you may or may not be aware, the park test is administered by the Pearson Company. Among the requirements that are included in administering the test...
Sorry, Mr. Leitaker, could you, or could you move the microphone a little closer? Sorry, I just want to make sure that everyone can hear you. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Among the, among the requirements for the administration of the test, it requires the teacher to agree to the terms issued by the Pearson Company. Having reviewed those terms, it makes it very clear that the Pearson Company might, may require the teacher to disclose name, social security number, and other private information. As a result of becoming aware of this, I advise this local to engage in collective bargaining on that issue that directly affects the terms and conditions of work. More importantly, and more problematic, is that the Pearson policy makes it very clear that Pearson regards these as assets that they might sell in the event that Pearson sells off components of its own company. That's troubling. That's troubling that the people in this room would be required to provide information to a third party that could be sold off to, we don't know who. Especially in a day, in time and day when theft identity is a big problem. Now, this has got nothing to do with administering the test. Ms. McDonald has previously indicated that she would administer the test. The superintendent's found ways of getting around Mr. and Ms. McDonald acknowledging the test on the, accepting the terms on the computer. We would posit that there's more to this than just that, and it was intimated by the superintendent when he mentioned the wireless router. A couple of years ago, Ms. McDonald came to the superintendent and expressed her concerns about, particularly health concerns with respect to herself and students in regard to the Wi-Fi radiation. He dismissed her concerns outright, and we regard this termination as treatment of retaliation because she chose to speak out. He advised her to keep her mouth closed, not to attend a PTA meeting. He has no control over who attends a PTA meeting, but he made it very clear that she might want to reconsider her, her career options. Quite frankly, it sounds to us like it's a whistleblower violation. With respect to her personal health issues, she provided the letter to the district, and I can give you a copy of the letter now, from her own medical doctor. My understanding is none of the committee members are doctors, but the doctor's notes make it very clear that she suffers from a syndrome related to electromagnetic waves. Now, we may not agree that this is core science. It may still be out there. It may, but it's an M.D. from Rush University Medical School, who's diagnosed and concluded that the symptoms exhibited by Ms. McDonald were causally related to the exposure to the radiation. Now, I have no problem with the radiation. I have no problem with a lot of things that are allergens to other people. I can eat carrots, my boss would die if he ate carrots. I can eat peanuts, I know the people, that the schools segregate wide areas because of the allergens. It may not have affected anyone else, but it did affect this woman. And she brought it to the attention of the school department. She asked for an accommodation. Once again, she was dismissed. The accommodation, by the way, is not one that she bears the burden of showing that she requires. She provided a note that would demonstrate that she in fact had a problem with the electromagnetic waves. The proper rule, and I know there are attorneys on this, on the committee, is when someone requests an accommodation, the question is, is this an unreasonable burden? There was no investigation, none whatsoever. It was dismissed outright. And let me tell you what she seeks as an accommodation. She would seek an outside classroom, a classroom, let me clarify, a classroom with outside walls to reduce the exposure. She would request that the Wi-Fi in her ceiling be disconnected. She would request that students that have the Chromebooks not bring them to her class. There is absolutely nothing that her students would have otherwise gained, that they would lose because they don't bring those to her class. But again, that's jumping ahead because this Chromebook stuff is relatively new. My point is, we believe that there was, that there is retaliation for bringing forth the complaint. And further, there's a violation that perhaps should be before, in addition to the school committee, before the Human Rights Committee, because she did request an accommodation, and that accommodation was not bad, nor was it explained that it was unreasonably burdensome. Instead, what she received was a demand that she produce her medical records. Understandably, Ms. McDonald is reluctant to provide medical records without a more narrow focus. She is willing to have anybody on this committee, including the attorney for the committee, to speak to her doctor, the letter you have in hand. Finally, I would just conclude what kind of teacher Ms. McDonald is. Her evaluations indicate that she's effective. She's the kind of teacher you want to retain. The support she has by her colleagues, I will just mention one letter, she's always willing to fight a battle she feels is important. She advocates and cares for her students. Don Driscoll, and I know your counsel there knows Don Driscoll well, was a great mediator. He was a superintendent of schools in Providence many years ago. One point he made was, we teach math, we teach social studies, but everything else, everything else we do teaches those students how to act in society. You want advocates. You want someone who will stand up and say, wait a minute, this is a danger. She didn't grandstand. She went privately to the superintendent. She's an effective teacher. What you have behind me is a demonstration of her colleague's support. They believe she is an effective teacher. The record produced by this school department, her evaluation, shows that she's an effective teacher. I would ask this committee to reconsider the recommendation of the superintendent. Ms. McDonald will make a statement, but in no way has she been insubordinate.
Thank you, Mr. Leitaker. Ms. McDonald, do you like to speak as well?
Yes, thank you.
Could you also, sorry, speak into the microphone, or slide it over?
Thank you.
Thank you.
First, I would just like to address something that Dr. Ogier brought up at the very beginning, specifically, I believe you referred to something, an infrastructure trial in March of 2015? Is that correct? I just want to clarify something there. I did not skip that trial. The email that told, that directed me to go to that trial was sent to Brian McDonald, who was another math teacher at that time in the math department. It just went to him by mistake. I didn't get it. There was, you know, a little bit of confusion. It got cleared up. I did not skip it knowingly. I have prepared statements there. They are based on the notification that Dr. Ogier sent to me on February 4th, so they, they are not as tailored to the specifics of today, but because that was my official notification, I'm going to read this. "Dr. Ogier has recommended that you terminate me this evening. According to the notification that I received, this recommendation is being made due to my unwillingness to use technology as a tool in the curriculum and assessment process, my unwillingness to follow directives regarding the use of technology, and a refusal to attend training sessions regarding the use of technology. I do not believe we are here tonight for any of those stated reasons. I do use technology daily in my classroom. I have an ACOS board that I use to deliver some instruction. In prior years, I taught in classrooms with smart boards, and I even taught for many years in a classroom where instruction was supplemented with various computer programs, delivering supplemental instruction, practice, and assessments. My students utilize the graph and capabilities of their calculators. I use a number of different software programs to create lesson slides, supplements, labs, and assessments. I have a lot of experience with technology in a classroom. I use it daily. As for the directives to use technology, I was not aware there were directives to use technology. Certainly, I use the technology available to me in a safe and responsible manner when it is appropriate, when it serves my students in my classroom. And I certainly wouldn't do anything to disservice my students. I feel a responsibility to them, and I respect them far too much." Finally, "I have never refused to attend training sessions regarding the use of technology. I've participated in several park administrative trainings. I have been trained on STAR and Engenuity as well. I have asked for the accommodation of training done on safe, hardwired computers when a training is scheduled to be on wireless devices, because exposure to EMF emitted from those devices is harmful and makes me sick. But I have never refused to go to a training, and I have made that clear. Never refused. I have never refused to give an assessment, ever. I've, in fact, I've proctored the park assessments. I believe that you've, you brought that up as well, Dr. Ogier. I've never refused. That's it. I hope that I've made it clear that we're not here tonight because of any of the reasons that Dr. Ogier stated. I believe that we're here tonight because I'm loud. I'm a persistent advocate for the health and well-being of my students, my colleagues, and myself. Two years ago, in a meeting, Mr. Leitaker mentioned that I called to discuss some concerns that I had regarding the wireless devices in our classrooms, Dr. Ogier warned me that if I persisted in raising those concerns, I would be fired. That's always been in the back of my mind, and please believe that I value my career. It's my livelihood. I love teaching, and I love my students. I persist despite Dr. Ogier's warning, because I believe that a very serious health threat exists in our classrooms, and I have a responsibility to my students and their families to advocate that there's, that the school department remove that threat. Most importantly, I think, we're not here tonight because I don't do my job. I do my job. I think I do it well. I'm not the best. I want to be better, and I work every day to be better. I am constantly reevaluating my approach, my philosophy, my assessment techniques. I care very much about my students, their well-being, and their futures. I feel a responsibility to do my very best for them every day, and I hope that I am a teacher that you will consider keeping on staff. Thank you."
Thank you.
I will just conclude with one point I wanted to hold off until she completed her statement, because she points out at the outset that she was, had prepared a statement with other things in mind, and that was our opinion, too. We believe this notice of this meeting tonight was legally deficient.
Okay, thank you. I want to take a moment if I could recognize our attorney, because members of the audience and the public are not going to be familiar with the way this process goes, simply because, as I discussed earlier, generally these types of meetings are held in an executive session. So, if you could just explain the process that we're going through here?
Thank you. Yes. This is considered somewhat of a pre-hearing. This is not an evidentiary hearing, and notes and emails, giving the specifics of the case, would not be presented tonight. It's just an overview. When there is, or should there be, an evidentiary hearing at a later date, certainly the principal and the assistant principal would give evidence, as well as the superintendent. The other statement is that this is not a final hearing. Again, it's more like a pre-hearing. If the committee tonight's take action that Ms. McDonald is not happy with, then she will have the right to a speedy, full evidentiary hearing in front of the committee, where not only would the committee, would, would we present evidence to the committee, but the union would also present evidence on her behalf. So, any decision you make tonight is not final. We are simply, again, making a decision, and then there would be no finality to it until you did that evidentiary hearing.
Thank you for that clarification.
However, we do have a March 1st deadline, and according to law, if you were going to move to take any action against Ms. McDonald, she has to be notified before March 1st.
Thank you. And I just want to make that clear, because it is very confusing for someone who's not familiar with the process, because it seems as if, you know, any action that we take, whichever way, is based on a very brief statement by the superintendent, a very brief statement by the employee. If she's not satisfied with whatever decision we have, there would be a much more involved process where very detailed evidence can be presented by both sides, and we look at the matter again with completely fresh eyes with all of the information. Having said that, any members of the committee like to discuss this matter? Mrs. Evans-Ado?
I actually wanted to ask the superintendent about the, briefly about the Pearson terms of agreement, and the attempts by the district to gain clarification on that issue.
At, when we met with Ms. McDonald and a few union representatives about the matter, we agreed that we would both, in our own ways, look to the Department of Education for clarification on that issue. We have received written comment from the Department of Education, and I have passed that along to the union president and to Mrs. Barton. And the agreement that we, we had, the statement claims that they do not have access to social security numbers. They have, they listed in the email the kinds of things that they do have access to, basically a person's name and what they teach, and, but not really much in the way of personal information. And that, and I am assured that the district is not interested and does not pass along social security numbers for any of our employees to, to Pearson. And that being known, that at that point in April, Ms. McDonald would indeed, you know, agree to the language and proctor the test like any other teacher. We have not gotten her response on that yet.
On Ms. McDonald's behalf, the information that the superintendent refers to, the guidance from RIDE, must have just come within the last day or two.
I made sure I provided it to Mary Barton.
Yesterday.
Yes.
We got it yesterday. My understanding is Ms. Barton and Ms. Carroll are still engaged in discussions about exactly what would be required for disclosure by the teachers and Ms. McDonald. Ms. McDonald cannot say at this point whether she would agree or not, because we don't have a final document that tells us what it is that they're looking for. With respect to your question, however, I can provide you with the information from Pearson. It's available on their website. They do indicate that they look for private information. Now, if perhaps RIDE is moving away from that, that's fine, that's a good thing, but they also make it very clear that while they so-called protect the identity of individuals, they are willing to sell that information, should they sell their assets.
Any other members of the committee? Okay, that having been said, would anyone like to make a motion? Any more discussion?
Honestly, I feel like we don't have a lot of information here. I know that, you know, a motion would lead to an evidentiary hearing, but there's just not a lot here on either side. Well, maybe a motion wouldn't lead to an evidentiary hearing if we have some resolution of the Pearson situation.
Well, Dr. Ogier, would that, if there were an agreement on that matter, what would the district's position be at that point?
On that matter, the issue would be settled. However, I, you know, one of the, one of the issues that we have is timing. In order to take disciplinary action of this kind for an employee, a notice has to be delivered by March 1st. It's not my rule. In fact, it's a rule that teachers' unions are very much in favor of, for obvious reasons, and I understand that. But because of that rule, I have to make a notification at this point, even, you know, regarding a matter that's a large part of this is, as right now, unsettled.
And I might want to add that, again, the problem and the reason that we're here tonight is because of the March 1st deadline. As you very well know, because we've had other situations, that if Mrs. McDonald, Ms. McDonald is not notified before March 1st, that you're going to terminate her, no matter what happens between now and the end of the year, you could not, you could simply, she would be suspended for an entire year. So, the reason we're here tonight is because of that March 1st deadline. If you take an action to terminate her tonight, again, nothing is final until she has a hearing, and nothing would be final until June. Assuming that everything worked out, then obviously, we would be in a different situation. But the March 1st deadline is a problem.
So, if I may, you're contemplating terminating her tonight because she hasn't agreed to a document that has yet to be produced on something that she may or may not do next month?
No. They're terminating her tonight because she does have several times in the past year when she has been insubordinate to the high school principal. That was one of them. We have letters in the file where the principal has, has told her she was insubordinate, and if you check her personnel file, you will see them. This has to do with insubordination at this point.
But it has nothing to do with the document you're working on.
So, one moment, please. And I just want to be clear, and it's my understanding that, that those incidences of insubordination are in her personnel file, and it's my understanding that she was directed to go home for a day as well at one point.
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Evans-Ado?
Just an additional question for Dr. Ogier. Have other teachers refused to proctor and sign the Pearson?
Not to my knowledge.
Mr. Jones, did you have questions?
I don't have a question. I don't know if we're in discussion, or we wait till the motion?
Well, I think, you know, I think we need to start with a motion and then work from there. The motion, we wouldn't vote on until we complete our discussion. So, for purposes of discussion, I will make a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir?
My understanding is Dr. Ogier has suspended the discipline pending a 504 meeting that he wanted to conduct.
Absolutely not. There's no such thing as pending a 504 meeting. That is absolutely not the case.
It's not 504 meeting, pending.
There is absolutely no connection between a 504 and suspending any action.
Pending medical documentation.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor.
Is there a letter that? For referencing?
That they're referencing?
No. The, according to the 504, Ms. McDonald came last year and asked for a 504. We met with Ms. McDonald, and I think it might have been Ms. Rollins, or, we, we had a conversation. We asked to speak to her physician. At that time, she would not allow us to speak to her physician.
That's incorrect.
No, that's the truth. We were not allowed to speak. You're right, I don't think there was a meeting. I think there was a request for a 504. We had two letters that were given to us. One was given to us by a, from a walk-in clinic in Wakefield, saying that she was allergic to electromagnetic radiation. And then another letter came in saying that she was getting migraine headaches when she was in school, and therefore she was, I think it's the one that's in front of you.
She was diagnosed by her doctor as having an allergy.
We asked, at that point...
Hold on, Ms. Carroll, yes.
Please, let's recognize each one at a time.
And if I could ask...
They don't have ongoing back and forth, and they'll get the opportunity to respond to this.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
At that point, we asked to have a release to speak to this doctor, and we were not granted that release.
Thank you.
If you feel something's incorrect with what she said, I mean, we'll give you the
opportunity to make a statement of that effect.
Ms. McDonald's recollection is that the request wasn't to speak to the doctor, the request was to examine medical records.
Sign a release for medical records. I was uncomfortable with that. You can of course speak to my doctor.
Perfectly comfortable with you speaking to a doctor.
Okay, thank you.
I believe I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that you have to sign the medical release in order to speak to the doctor.
She'll provide you with that.
I think that's the same.
Just to speak to the doctor.
Thank you. Yeah, well, I mean, we kind of need to have a discussion for the purposes, I haven't yet. We have to have a discussion for the purposes of either approving or not approving a motion. So, for purposes of discussion, I'm going to make a motion. And the motion that I'm going to make for purposes of our discussion is to approve the recommendation of the superintendent to terminate Ms. McDonald for, no, we're not even...
Terminating at the end of the year.
Okay. Motion to terminate Ms. McDonald at the end of the year. And so for discussion purposes, if anyone would second that motion?
Second.
Okay, so now we have a motion and a second. So, with respect to that, what discussion, you've spoken a couple times, does anyone else want to jump in at this point? If not, okay. Mrs. Evans-Ado?
Well, I'm hopeful that there can be some resolution of this Pearson issue, since I think that's an obvious huge obstacle here. I think that's an obvious huge obstacle here. I just want to comment that I don't think that this has anything to do with your advocacy. This committee respects your advocacy. You have come before this committee for two years, multiple times. You wrote letters, I believe you wrote letters to our home, you wrote emails to us about your concerns. They were very detailed. Both Mr. Jones and myself responded to you in writing, and he really responded with research and a long discussion. And, you know, I'm not going to argue or disrespect at all what you're saying about Wi-Fi and how you feel it's making you ill. Sometimes science doesn't catch up with things that are happening, and that may be something very subtle and only some people, that happens way down the road. But we are not in a position to judge that. We're not doctors, and we have to rely on the state and, you know, the way it's being handled now in our, with the medical system, what the community is telling us, and what the Rhode Island Department of Education is telling us. I know that Dr. Ojai went to them and asked for an opinion from the Department of Health, I believe, actually, to see what the current thinking on that was. So we didn't disregard your concerns, we respected your concerns. You have a First Amendment right to get up in front of this committee and say whatever you think, and I will defend that, and I have all along. This is about something else. It kind of morphed into not doing something that's really a part of your job, that you have to do. The exam is required. It's required that, I mean, I may not understand the whole, the way it works, but it's my understanding that teachers are required to do this Pearson agreement in order to proctor the POC test, which is a part of your job. I don't know anything about your request for the, an accommodation or what the response on that was. I have no knowledge of that. I do know that Dr. Ojai, you know, has been very honest with us, that this is not about your advocacy. We didn't, we did not contemplate all the whole time that you've been telling us about Wi-Fi and your concerns and upset about it. This was not contemplated, what's happening now is a result of other actions that, where you refuse to do certain things that we are requiring as a part of the job. We received a lot of letters of support for you. It's obvious you're a great teacher, and it's just a shame, you know. Hopefully, at some point, the Pearson, if that's the only thing that's, that's in the way, can be resolved.
Actually, before we speak, I want to sort of comment on what you had said. I want to second something that Mrs. Evans-Ado said, which is that I would take no action whatsoever as a result of your advocacy for the position that you have with respect to your concerns of the dangers of Wi-Fi. I have, prior to being elected to this committee, I attended many, many, many school committee meetings. I've sat next to you at tables on that side of the table while you got up to the microphone and expressed your concerns to members of the committee at that time. I've received the emails that you've sent to us. I have read the studies that you have sent. I have looked at difficulty that our committee has, and you see it here, is that under Rhode Island law, if we're going to take, if the administration's going to be allowed to take any action, we are now at February 16th. That action, the preliminary steps to that action, would need to be taken essentially at this meeting right now, or nothing can happen. And that is not our doing, that is the directive of the legislature, and the process exists for a reason. We're also, you'll see, having a lot of struggle with the fact that because this is a very preliminary step in the process, we as members of this committee do not have all of the information that we actually need to make this decision. But yet, we don't get to a point where we have, I mean, we can, and I see, Mr. Leidecker, you gesturing. We can have all the back and forth that we want right now, but it's still preliminary.
I understand you have a March 1 deadline.
Yeah. And, and we would, in the event that this committee were to vote to support the superintendent's recommendation, you would have the right to come back to us. First of all, you could continue discussion with the administration to try to come to a resolution to some of these unfinished action items that we're talking about here, one of which is a 504 plan, whether you're entitled to reasonable accommodation that the district can provide, or whether there is no reasonable accommodation that the district can provide, and get to the bottom of some other details that could possibly resolve this. But unless an action is taken by this committee tonight, in the event that there is no resolution, we can't do anything else. This is step one. So, you know, that's where I think that we're in a pickle, because, you know, the only way we get to that next step, the only way we get to hear your complete side of this situation, and that is with witnesses, with a stenographer, with testimony, back and forth from both sides, is to go on this preliminary step. I'm going to recognize Dr. J. Fermon. He wanted to speak to something very specific with respect to some of our back and forth tonight.
Yes, I want to, I want to speak to the accusation that I somehow threatened your job in speaking with you when we first spoke about, when you came to see me about your concerns for Wi-Fi. I want to be clear, I never threatened your job about that. In this position, over the five years I've been superintendent, there have been a number of times when employees of the district have come at that microphone and have expressed their concerns about particular issues, and they haven't necessarily been the same concern of mine. At no point have I ever penalized or had any feeling that I had to provide some kind of retribution toward an employee for that. In fact, I've often had a lot of very respectful conversations with employees who've come to me feeling a little nervous about doing that, and knowing that maybe their principal or the superintendent has a different opinion. I mean, this is public school, and we are members of the public, and that's part of the beauty of, we get to chime in. And I get that, it comes with the program, and I respect it. So, you know, this has nothing to do with your advocacy in that regard. What this has to do with is, you know, I can't have employees who pick and choose what rules they're going to follow and what rules they're not going to follow. That would lead to a real problem, lots of different problems in the district in terms of efficiency and in terms of just getting, you know, our mission done. And so, it's not something I like to do, to go this far with disciplinary matters. And if there weren't a March 1 deadline, perhaps we could get some of these things resolved in a timely manner, and I wouldn't have to go there. But for right now, I do. And so, you know, I wanted to make that point, particularly with the number of teachers in the room, that you can understand that somehow retribution for a concern spoken at a school committee meeting has nothing to do with this matter.
Dr. Ojai, could I respond to that?
Ms., I'm going to recognize our attorney for a second.
All right. I want to clear up the issue with the 504 and the information that we have, and the issue of receiving a release.
Thank you.
I have a March 13th letter from Dr. Phil Ojai to Ms. McDonald. Dear Ms. McDonald, I'm in receipt of a letter from interim principal Denise Manceri, sent to you on Friday, March 6th, as well as your response to Ms. Manceri in an email dated March 9th, and a note from the Wakefield Walk-In and Primary Care Clinic. It is my understanding that as of the present time, you've failed to follow through with an order that you received regarding POC training. As a result of this action, Ms. Manceri has found you to be insubordinate and has recommended to me that disciplinary action be taken. You have indicated to Ms. Manceri that because you have a sensitivity to EMFs and because your major life activities are impaired when you're exposed to wireless radiation, that you are unable to fulfill your responsibilities. Ms. Manceri directed you to obtain documentation to that effect, and you responded with a note from a walk-in clinic. Since you are alleging a disability that requires an accommodation, I will place any disciplinary action on hold. However, prior to having my office schedule a 504 meeting, I will need a release to speak to and receive information from Dr. Michael Weaver and a Wakefield Walk-In Primary Care. As soon as I have the release, I will have the 504 coordinator schedule a meeting. If you fail to provide me with the release, I will not be able to move forward. That was dated March 13th, 2015. On April 6th, 2015, Ms. McDonald responded to Dr. Ojai. I'm in receipt of a letter you dated March 13th. It seems that you find the information provided by my doctor concerning my disability to be insufficient. Would you indicate what you consider to be sufficient? Additionally, I'm enclosing a second opinion from Dr. Hubbard for your review. I do not feel comfortable signing a release that allows you to speak with my doctors, as that I believe that this would put a strain on the doctor-patient relationship. However, if you would indicate what additional questions you have regarding my disability, I will take those to my doctor, and after a discussion with my doctor, provide you with the necessary information. At this time, I would like to formally ask the North Kingston School Department to provide me with accommodations to address the concerns of my doctors. In a letter dated April 15th, 2015, Dr. Ojai sent to Ms. McDonald. I'm in receipt of your letter dated April 6th, a note from Dr. Hubbard dated March 30th, and a note from Dr. Weaver. In your letter, you requested that the North Kingston School Department provide you with accommodations. However, you have not provided the district with sufficient medical documentation to support a disability that requires accommodations. Therefore, before the district can even schedule a meeting to determine if you qualify for an accommodation, you will need to provide the district with an evaluation that supports your disability. Furthermore, we will need a release to speak to your doctor in the event that there are questions regarding your disability. Additionally, please let it be understood that you may be required to be examined by a doctor of our choice. In the meantime, absent any further documentation, I expect you to perform the essential functions of your job. There's been no response to that letter of April 15th, 2015.
Thank you.
I did email you.
If I may?
Yes.
Again, Ms. McDonald believed, Ms. McDonald believed that she was, what was requested was medical records, and the April 15th letter that Ms. Carroll just read substantiates that belief because they're looking for sufficient medical documentation. She was very reluctant to disclose medical records. She has never had a problem with anybody contacting her doctor to have that discussion.
Okay.
In addition, I would point out that, once again, you don't have to make a decision just because March 1 is coming. It just doesn't allow you to terminate her this year.
Correct.
We understand that. But I would point out, once again, these events are over a year, a year old. Where was the ensuing discipline during this time? It's happening now because of an anticipation about a test two months from now that she may or may not administer? There's never been an occasion where she didn't proctor a test, except for the one occasion she was sent home.
Okay, thank you. So, as I said a moment ago, the difficulty that I know members of the committee are having is that this is clearly a matter that deserves a detailed back and forth, specific evidentiary matters, such as the letters that were just read by our attorney, matters that you have brought up, discussion that you may have, Mrs. McDonald. The only way that this committee can get to that point, in the event that we feel that, assuming, and I happen to be an attorney, I'm not a criminal attorney, I'm not a litigator, but there were times when, in court, you assume that all the facts that are taken in a particular document are true, so that you can get to the next step to determine if they are not. And in my opinion, and I will only speak my opinion, if it were true that all the facts that the superintendent is laying out are true, and I do not at this point know that they are, then I would be willing to support a recommendation of the type that the superintendent is making. The only way that I can get to that point is to bring us to the next point and have that evidentiary hearing. That's what I'd like to say. Mrs. Evans-Ado?
One last comment. I, it sounds to me like there could very well be a resolution to this, regardless of what we vote right now. If there's even a willingness, and obviously there is, judging from those letters on the part of the administration, it sounds to me like they've been, it sounds more like a misunderstanding. They've been very cooperative, in my opinion, in being open to possibly providing the accommodation, but they're going to need the documentation that they need. And then also, working through the issue regarding the Pearson. If those two issues can be worked through, then, you know, we could have a positive outcome. But I, I support the superintendent at this point.
May I speak?
At this point, we're really past that, as I said, and I, we, you will have an opportunity, if this committee makes a vote, to support the superintendent's recommendation, to lay out a complete case showing everything that you want to show, entering evidence that you want to have, having witnesses that you want to have, and we'll get to the bottom of the whole thing. But I don't think that there's anything, you know.
First will be the last word. I won't speak.
Normally, committee, you hear from them, and then you deliberate in, in private, without even us available. And so it's you guys that should be talking and deliberating now, not having this give and take.
Right.
Because remember, this is just a pre-haring, and they get to make a statement, and then you deliberate.
If you want to make a very brief statement, that's fine. I just, you know, we could go back and forth forever because there are differences of opinion.
I understand. I just, I would like to say that in, in regards to the insubordination allegations, claims, I, and I, I believe these are insubordination in regards to giving the POC test, I've always given the POC test. The only thing that is up in the air is the signing of an agreement that really the teacher shouldn't be signing. So, that is the only thing. I have always done my job, I've carried out my job, I've done everything to the letter. I just, I have, I have been uncomfortable signing the documentation that really, there's good reason for that.
Thank you. And, you know, I want to give you a chance that you feel that you've, you've been able to speak to us, but like I said, we're just at a point where now it's time for us to make our discussion, and should we move forward, you will have, and I want you to understand that, ample opportunity to tell us anything that you need to tell us. It's not that we're cutting you off, it's not that we're, you know, it's just we're at a point now where we have one side, we have another side, but this isn't the place for that type of delving into the details. Mr. Jones, did you have anything you want to say?
Well, I probably spent 15 minutes saying what you said in a couple minutes, so I'll spare everyone going through that. I'll just reiterate what I think both of you said. I really appreciated all the information you've provided, you and a few others. I've learned a lot more about RF radiation and other things. And so I would just add simply, in my own inquiry of the superintendent on this issue, that topic has never come up with regard to this action. I would agree, I think, with what's been said, which is simply, you know, issues that may come in the future, to me, are issues in the future, they're not really relevant now. What's relevant to me is there is a claim of insubordination, which I think you cannot have a well-run district when those things occur. I think I would agree that it's troubling to me that on one occasion, I think you're claiming, and this could, would obviously have to be adjudicated, that you were not properly informed, or you didn't get the email. And so that is something I would like to hear more, I would like, I would like to hear more of.
I know it's frustrating.
From both the administration and, and from your own side, or whatever other evidence regards in that. So for me, I think the issue is with regard to the insubordination, that there is potentially reason it was brought forward, and there might be potentially reasons to explain them. And I think that needs to be resolved. I think if this was the final decision, I might be troubled coming to a definitive conclusion, but since this is not the final outcome, I think there is reasonable point to go forward to a more detailed adjudication of this issue.
Thank you.
Or resolution.
Or resolution. Mr. McGovern, anything you'd like to add?
I think what we have on our plate is, is really just the insubordination. There's numerous episodes of insubordination and progressive discipline, including an employee being sent home, and we've been asked to support the superintendent's decision, and there are avenues of appeal after tonight.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second, so we'll have a vote. The motion on the table was to approve the recommendation of the superintendent to terminate Ms. McDonald, with, again, the understanding that while that sounds like it's the end, it is not. That would merely trigger you to have the opportunity to request a complete and full evidentiary hearing before this committee, and, you know, we would then get into the absolute nitty-gritty details of what you are saying, what they are saying, witnesses, documents, and everything before any final decision is made. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That is the final item on our agenda this evening. If I could ask for a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.